Welcome to the October 29, 2020 special meeting of the Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. The committee allows for more detailed conversation and exploration of issues. This committee, like the Planning Commission, will likely operate in a virtual environment through the fall, and I would ask for your patience as we use this platform for our public meetings. There may be slight delays as we transition between speakers, presentations, and participants. If any participants have issues with the technology, please send a message to the moderator. There's one discussion item on our agenda today, and there are members of the public joining us today. I would ask everyone to... Excuse me? Oh, I would ask everybody to... Participants... Sorry. Oh, I would ask that everyone be respectful of our time and ask that comments not be repetitive. If you would like to speak, please send a message to the moderator. And our first discussion item, and only one for today, is rezoning Z1320 Downtown South. Last week, we heard a presentation from planning staff and stormwater staff, as well as a presentation from the applicant, and received public comment. Today, we will start with the presentation from planning staff.
Hey, Tika. I'm sorry. Before we get started, I'd just like to recuse myself from this rezoning Z1320. I just had some recent information with my company, so I just need to be able to recuse myself from this.
Okay. Thank you very much. So that leaves, I think, with six commissioners. Is that correct at the moment?
No, I'm sorry. Let me close my...
Yeah, I just want to confirm we have quorum since I can't see everybody. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six. So we should be okay for quorum. All right. Thank you.
If you could just take a quick vote to recuse him.
Sure. Can we do that by a show of hands?
Yes, that would be fine.
All right. It's unanimous. With that, we'll start with the presentation from planning staff. And I'd ask commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of the presentations and any public comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Hicks and Planning Commission. Can you hear me and see the presentation?
We can hear you, and we can see it.
All right, great. Okay, thank you. So just a quick reminder of your deadline for action in January 11, 2020. And I'll jump right into the presentation here. Now, this is what I plan to cover today. I'll define a few financial and legal instruments that have been the subject of a lot of discussion around this case. I'll provide an update on the equitable development around transit plan and its relation to those financial instruments. And finally, I'll respond to the comments about the comprehensive plan analysis in regard to the Downtown South rezoning. So the first financial mechanism I wanted to define is called a synthetic tax increment or synthetic tax increment financing, or a synthetic TIF. Basically, how it works is the city sets aside a portion of future growth and tax revenue to fund community benefits for infrastructure projects in a specific area of the city. When using this tool, the city will be responsible for completing projects and administering programs funded by the TIF. And so, at its very basic function, the city collects tax revenue and spends that revenue on services and programs. And so this graphic is a basic way to understand a synthetic TIF. So what is shown here in green is a representation of what existing and future tax revenue may be. So it's expected, it's always expected, that development will increase the property value of the developing property, and so that's why people do it. As property value increases, property tax revenue also increases. And so this shows the difference between a current day tax revenue and future tax revenue based on some development, some hypothetical development. And so, a piece of property will generate, a developed piece of property will generate more tax revenue than a vacant piece of property. The city then uses this revenue to provide services and programs, basically everything else the city pays for. So the increment in tax increment financing is the difference between the revenue generated on a piece of property today and future tax revenue of a developed piece of property. And the key question with TIFs is always what percentage of that future revenue or that increment, additional revenue, would be set aside for a specific community benefit project or a program? And so, some portion of that increment can be set aside for some community benefit, infrastructure project, or a program. The rest of the tax generated would go back into the general fund. So that's basically tax increment financing. A tax increment grant is slightly different. Tax increment financing could provide benefit to a broader area, whereas a tax increment grant would use that tax set aside for a specific development or project. Again, it involves a set aside of an increased revenue. Another key difference here is with tax increment financing, most typically, the city is spending the tax money on a project or a program, and a tax increment grant, that additional set aside of tax revenue is actually spent by a developer or a private party to do an infrastructure project or provide some other public benefit. So that's a key difference, where the money is spent and who is spending the money. So again, the difference between a TIG and a synthetic TIF are where the money is spent, who is spending the money. Ultimately, these two types of tools would be decided on by the city council through legislative action, and then subsequently in a budgeting process, how much of that increment is spent on what. So another thing we've heard a lot about is a community benefits agreement. And what this is, is a private contract between a community group and a developer. They're intended to mitigate an undesirable impact that the local community believes a project would create. But typically, a developer agrees to incorporate a certain amenity or a program into a project in exchange for that community group's support for their project. And so, we've heard a lot about these, a couple of instruments. I'll pause there if there's any questions. Otherwise, I'll move on to updates on the equitable development around transit plan, which ties a lot of this stuff into some recommendations that you'll be reviewing next month. Okay, so I'll move on. So the equitable development around transit plan is a planning class...
Can I ask a question?
Please do.
For the first item? So with the MOU that the city council and applicant are negotiating, what aspects of the TIG and community benefits agreement are incorporated into that MOU? Just sort of high-level buckets of what's going in? Is it both the TIG and the community benefits where those funds would go? Are you... Well, maybe I'll start off. Are you familiar with the MOU being negotiated between the applicant and the council?
Generally speaking, yes. I do not know exactly what is in that. I would ask Ken or David to provide any detail that we do have on those negotiations.
I guess my key question is, are, under that MOU, are they negotiating, is that MOU designed to encompass both the terms of the TIG financing and also the community benefits agreement?
The agreement is to, that sets forth the amount of the TIG and then what has to be produced by the development team as part of the conditions of receiving the grant. But at this point, I don't know, I certainly do not personally know what the concepts of that agreement are, or even where it is in the negotiation process. Yeah, what the grant, what the agreement will be about will be the terms of the TIG, what, how much money is in the grant, and what is being, what is being produced as a result of it. It is not, though, a community benefit agreement in the technical sense that there's no, there's no community groups, it's a counterparty to the agreement. It's an agreement between the development team and the city of Raleigh.
So in this case, right, the community, the counterparty in that case is the city?
Yes.
We've talked a lot about sort of conceptually, the two, and two separate buckets, working with them, as opposed to identifying what the developer will be required to provide to the community, and then obviously how to fund it, being wrapped up all into one agreement that's being negotiated with the city. So I just wanted to clarify that that's not, that's not two separate agreements.
Right. So under the bifurcated path, this, the zoning that's before you does not contain anything regarding the TIG or any community benefits. It is simply the zoning and the conditions attached to it, and that's what you're being asked to make a decision on. It is, of course, an expectation that it'll be followed by this additional agreement, but that's not what you're reviewing right now. What you're reviewing is simply the zoning in isolation. And you, as a result, you may wish to review this as if, as if the future agreement was not going to exist because you don't have a guarantee of what its contents are at this point. All you know is the zoning that's being requested.
Gotcha.
Thank you. And I would ask if we could hold, commissioners could hold our questions until after the presentation is complete? That would, that would be helpful. Thank you. Commissioner McIntosh, I see you've joined us. Welcome. I can't hear you. We can't hear you. You may be able to call in. Okay. I'm gonna, I'd ask if you could work that out with the operator, if that's possible.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Yeah, so I thought that the presenter asked us if we had questions on the financing, and I had a question on financing, but you'd like us to wait?
Yeah, he did ask, but I'm gonna ask that we hold our questions to the end of the Thank you. Mr. Clem, if you'd like to continue, thank you.
All right, thanks. And thanks for the note about holding questions. Sorry for the prompt there. All right. So on to equitable development around transit. This is a study that was recently completed. The Planning Commission is set to begin their review next month. We'll be mailing out a little over 20,000 postcards to residents all over the city to let them know about the upcoming review and how to participate. So the equitable development around transit plan put up two main questions. How much affordable housing should be kept and created near BRT? And how much of overall city growth should be accommodated near BRT? We have a really great video on YouTube. If you go and just search the term equitable development around transit, it's about eight minutes, and it will explain most of the study and recommendations to you. And for anyone watching at home, go ahead and watch that. It'll, it'll get everyone kind of ready for that upcoming review. And so, the equitable development plan focused on the areas around BRT and the, and the planned stations. And so this is generally the location of Downtown South. There were two outstanding alternatives for a southern alignment. City Council has authorized the alignment on Wilmington Street in a recent action. So there's just some inter-jurisdictional coordination there, but with great certainty, it will be on Wilmington Street to the east of the rezoning site. And so, what the equitable development plan recommends in its policy language is it will elevate equity in planning and zoning decisions. It recommends new and improved equity programs. It recommends creating and maintaining affordable housing in bus rapid transit areas, and it recommends a way to pay for them. So we talked about synthetic tax increment financing earlier. The equitable development plan recommends using that tool. We call it an equity fund. And the idea is that some of that increased tax revenue would be set aside to provide equitable development in our transit areas. An important question is, one, how much of that increment is set aside? And two, how will the city decide what to spend the money on? And what the plan recommends is participatory budgeting. And participatory budgeting basically is a public vote on how to spend a portion of the city's budget. So the equitable development plan recommends that the money in the equity fund gets prioritized by a public vote in participatory budgeting. The money can be used for subsidizing affordable housing, buying land to create new affordable housing, improving existing services and programs in bus rapid transit areas and other broad community benefits. The idea is that this money would be spent back in the community where the additional tax revenue was generated. So where development occurs around BRT, including in the Downtown South area, where that development occurs, that new tax revenue generated would be spent back on community benefits in those areas, therefore tying development and redevelopment directly to community benefits prioritized by the community themselves. And so that's the equity fund, and you'll, you know, just a taste of what you'll be reviewing next month. I'll move on again to the third part of my presentation, which is, there were some questions about the vision theme of the comprehensive plan. Two that were analyzed in the text of the staff report, and there are six throughout the comprehensive plan. It groups ideas and visions and goals of the future of the city along these kind of six themes. And so, quickly, I'll just run through them. Economic prosperity and equity. Concentrating growth into mixed-use centers and creating more accessible community citywide will advance the goal of economic prosperity and equity. Expanding housing choices through creating a broader range of housing options citywide will give more opportunities for people all over the city with different places to live and different types of housing that are more affordable, and generally more housing as well, to keep the market stocked with options. Managing our growth through more compact forms of development will help to reach the overall goal of accommodating the growth that the city is anticipating. So right now, the city is about 460,000 people. We anticipate that number will increase by 40% in the next 20 years. That's 180,000 more people moving to the city. How are we going to manage that growth? The plan says we manage that growth by more compact forms of development. This is actually, sorry, incorrect label here, coordinating land use and transportation by implementing citywide and regional transit system like BRT and other investments through pedestrian and bike-friendly communities will help to coordinate, better coordinate land use and transportation decisions. Green building techniques and infrastructure, resource conservation and preservation will help to advance Green Print Raleigh, growing successful neighborhood communities through a series of ordinance and subdivision and regulatory changes to accommodate smart growth. And so a lot of that is in the code, and we're constantly changing the code to help, help this out. For example, the discussion last time about development and the flood fringe. Well, right now, development is limited to 50% of the flood fringe. We're currently changing the code to reduce that to zero in the flood fringe. And there's a zoning condition that was added to the case to accommodate that. And so, every policy in the plan, if you flip through the pages, you'll notice they each have these little icons at the end of the statement. And those icons link each policy to a particular vision in the plan. The one left here accounts for all six visions. The future land use map is a vision for how and where the city grows, and it's intended to help address these growth management issues and create more walkable and equitable places for people to live, creating more opportunities for businesses and other industries to exist throughout the city in ways that can help to achieve the city's goals. You also notice there are key policies. So these are the little orange dots that you see. These policies are the ones that are most closely tied to rezoning requests, and a really key distinction here is that these policies set forth private sector expectations for development. So these policies give direction of how development should occur and what the private development community should be accountable for in doing that. A lot of it is covered in the, in the code, and some of it is not. And so that's when you see things like zoning conditions that strengthen code requirements in, in the analysis of these policies. And so, what I did was I pulled out all of the policies that were identified in the analysis and identified which ones were key. You can see that on the left-hand side of the screen with the orange dots, and then which vision themes were represented in each of the policies. And I'll just flip through these quickly. I won't go through all of them again. But you can see, some, some of the policies are, have more pertinent vision themes than others. These are all consistent policies, those last two tables and this one. And these are the inconsistent policies. There are two key policies here that are inconsistent. The future land use consistency and different structure impacts is inconsistent as well. And that's it. That's what I have prepared for our discussion today. I know that the applicants are here. They have a presentation, and they have remarks as well in addition to the public, but we can proceed however you would like at this time.
Thank you. I believe that Mr. Bowers, well, I think you covered it, actually. I was gonna speak a little bit to the CBA and the TIG. Did you want to add any comments?
No, but I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, great. Thank you. So now, what I'd like to do is to hear from the applicant.
We have Molly Stewart here for the applicant team.
Thank you, Jason. We did submit slides, and also I'd request that Bonner Gaylord kick off.
Okay, I think I have the slides up. Can someone just confirm they can see them, please?
Yes. Slides, thank you.
Thank you.
Then, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Well, thank you all for your time today, and we're very grateful to be able to sit down with you all again, and we've been working very hard since our last gathering and have made significant progress. We're not all the way there yet on, on one component, but we feel like we've got a plan and a pathway and feel confident that we'll be able to execute. So, next slide, please. So, we're gonna go through, as a team, a quick recap, and then some statements on the engagement to give you all some more information there that we weren't able to convey in the last discussion. And then, then Molly's gonna go over our conditions, and then we're gonna dig in on stormwater, and Daniel with McAdams is going to go through the downstream analysis and what we've learned. So next slide. Just to remind everyone of our guiding tenants that we've adopted at Downtown South is that we want to create a district, not a development. And that district requires a draw. For this development to be a walkable, vertically-integrated, mixed-use, transit-supportive development, it needs a draw to catalyze it. And that, the entertainment and sports component, there is no entertainment and sports district, entertainment and sports. And so, just a reminder that that, we want to create something that's evolving and public and part of the community. We also are focused on leaning into nature. The surrounding natural areas are significant and sensitive, and we want to lift them up and honor them and provide ways for the public to learn about and engage with nature, learn about how urban environments operate within an ecosystem, and further understanding of green stormwater infrastructure practices and how the city can grow in a way that's sensitive to the environment. We also want to physically connect to the heart of the downtown and surrounding communities. We want to provide a grid and street network that allows other surrounding properties to connect and be plugged in and create connectivity from a bike, ped, vehicular, greenway, and transit aspect. And the BRT station is very helpful in accomplishing that. And lastly, we want to partner early, often, and always. And we have been vocal and present and visible and for over a year and a half now. And in addition to that, because we are local, North Carolina Football Club is local, we are walking suggestion boxes, and we're always available to talk through our plans and discuss what our goals are with the community and to ensure those are shared goals. Next slide. So, just a reminder on site connectivity, and also wanted to give folks a slide that gives proximity of the surrounding neighborhoods so everyone can get a understanding of that. There was certainly no intention of leaving these neighborhoods off on the previous slide. It was a slide that was focused on educational institutions, and it wasn't intended to diminish the neighborhoods that are surrounding Downtown South. But as you can see, there are a number of neighborhoods that are historic, that are significant to our city's history, and that have experienced challenges in the past because of the city and surrounding development. And we are committed to dealing with those challenges and being sensitive to all of our neighbors. Next slide. So, talking through the, the community engagement and outreach, as you all know, we started this process in August of 2019 and have been persistently engaging with the community. We've, we've done twice the neighborhood meetings despite COVID and the challenges that that presented. We've had, had good attendance at those meetings. We've had persistent one-on-one meetings, and as I mentioned earlier, that, and that doesn't count the constant feedback that our teams are receiving. We've been, been meeting with community groups and our, additionally, our Neighborhood, Neighborhood Online Survey has been live since Janu, since May, I guess, and we've received 2,268 respondents who have answered, given feedback on the development. And that, that is a significant number, particularly in the percentage of neighborhood input. Typically, Neighborhood sees low, single-digit percentage in immediate neighborhood feedback, and 10% of the respondents were, 10% of the feedback came from the, or, I'm sorry, 10% of the overall neighborhood was represented in that 2268 number. Then, we will, we plan on further community engagement as we enter into discerning the, the relative priorities of the neighborhood, and that would include canvassing to make sure that anyone who doesn't have access to the internet or isn't looking at this or hearing about it, that they have someone come to their door and make sure and get feedback from them as well. So we are committed to community engagement and remain committed, and the engagement that we have entered into thus far has given us an array of, of requests from the community and, and so, that we've talked about before. So to go to the next slide. You can see this list is a list that you've seen before, and the reason that we've separated, separated it out into different color fonts is that a number of the components can be addressed through our rezoning and, and the site plan and the requirements with the city. And so, we will be, we will be providing infrastructure for multimodal transit, infrastructure improvements, transit amenities, bicycle and pedestrian facilities. infrastructure improvements, transit amenities, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, bike and parking facilities as part of our our site plan and and the requirements of the city. We have committed to public art and culture attractions. We have have committed to uh green stormwater infrastructure and environmental education in our in our conditions. And we've committed to open space for all, including public fields and court uh through our conditions. And those can be amplified with the 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 equity fund. It doesn't mean that that these zoning conditions can't be taken further uh with that equity fund. And the the items in red you'll see are uh yet to be, yet to be determined because there's uh not yet a financing source for housing, for for building affordable housing or for for uh providing incubation spaces or um integrated wellness assets or being able to support minority women-owned businesses because all of that is encompassed in the agreement that will be uh discerned by the community and entered into by the county, by the city, the county and um and and us do building the site. And uh so with that, we've got uh a number of these components that we're tackling and uh some that that we absolutely are planning to do. And we need the the equity fund or the TIG in order to do that. So next slide. I will turn it over to uh Molly Stewart to talk through our our conditions.
Thank you. Thank you. So I I know that you've been reviewing this project for quite some time now and are very familiar um with the fact that most of these conditions are highly technical and very much in depth. Um to the point where although I want to give a high-level overview of those conditions today, uh it 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 could even be misleading. Um you know, it just just because um there is so much detail left out as far as um what these are. So I just wanna make it clear that I'm happy to go into more detail on any of these um if there are any questions about them, but I think you are familiar with what the actual conditions say. So just as a reminder, um we've we've gone ahead, prohibited some of those high-impact uses um that are otherwise permitted in the district. Um we've limited some retail uses along the northernmost block that's along South Saunders. And that's where the site starts to blend into the existing neighborhood. Um in particular, limiting those building heights uh not only in the north, but down along Granite Street and extending the neighborhood transition distance, as well as limiting heights north of Pennmark and Waterworks and limiting the heights along Maywood Avenue as well. And conditions four and five, those add park requirements and those are amenitized parks and that have to happen before a certain number of residences can be built. Um condition number six, I think you'll hear a lot more about today. So I'll just leave it by saying that we have included heightened standards for stormwater um standards, including green stormwater infrastructure measures. Uh condition seven and eight limit the office, retail, and residential uses in the two western portions of the site. And then number nine, I did wanna focus on a little bit because this is new. This is um something that we added in response to our conversation last week. Uh in in particular, this, the language of it, um if we go to the next slide. Here's where I'll actually show the language of the of the condition. Right? So this is what we've submitted and it it provides that no lot coverage is permitted within that floodway fringe area um with certain exceptions. And this language uh adapted for the for the format. Um but effectively, it really is just taken from uh the UDO, from section 9.3.5C of the UDO. Um but that condition does something different. It it allows only 50% lot coverage. And so here, we've taken that down to no lot coverage, um understanding that that is the recommendation. And so I just wanted to clarify that that new condition has been submitted as well. Um so if the if there are no questions about kind of the conditions and and where we are with those today, I'll turn it back to Bonner.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll I'll ask commissioners to hold their questions until uh the complete, the presentation's complete.
Oh, all right. Uh next slide, please. So we're gonna dive into stormwater here as this has been a a significant topic. And uh we have had discussions with with One Wake and City Raleigh staff. Uh we met met yesterday morning with One Wake and uh we've met several times with city staff. And we plan to meet with uh One Wake again tomorrow. We have have that on the schedule as well. And so uh we want to make sure that we're addressing all the concerns. We have completed the downstream impact uh analysis and our uh Daniel will talk through that. And based on the 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 learnings from the past couple of days, we're working on a enforceable and executable uh condition language that will address the down, the needs of downstream stakeholders and uh the city and make sure that we have a an exemplary uh set of controls on on our stormwater. So with that, I'll I'll turn it over to Daniel.
Good afternoon, Lord. Uh this is Daniel Weykey from McAdams. I'm a stormwater engineered registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. Um could we go to the next slide here? Um I'm here to talk about the downstream impact analysis that's been conducted to date. Um as you all know, uh the district that we're looking at with the resoning condition is um along Walnut Creek. Um Walnut Creek is one of three major watersheds in the Raleigh area. It its headwaters are up in Terry and then it traverses down from Kerry to the southeast uh here to Raleigh and then onwards to the New Shriver, further to the east. Uh in looking at this figure here, you can see the the scale of the drainage area to the uh district that we're looking at resoning. Uh the district is about 145 acres and you'll note that the drainage area to this point is around 11,000 acres. So that's a little over 1% of the drainage area. Um we we did our analysis to two points, one being uh South Wilmington Street right there. And then knowing some of the concerns uh about Rochester Heights, we had also extended the analysis down to uh State Street, which is just downstream of Rochester Heights. You'll note that uh the drainage area of Walnut Creek to Rochester Heights and the South State Street area is just under 1% at 15,000 acres. There's a little bit of technical jargon here, but uh if you can think about the the travel time of flow, you know, from uh a rainstorm, if it's raining up in Kerry, the this TC is called the time of concentration. It takes about 4.9 hours for that flow to arrive at the site and then about 5.2 hours for it to get down to the South Wilmington Street area, just in some rough numbers. The analysis that we undertook originally, um we we looked at it a couple of ways. The the first way was we used uh the USGS, United States Geological Survey uh methods, regional curve methods um to look at the flows uh to these two points using the drainage area characteristics. And then, once we had seen uh some of those values, we 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 actually uh reached out to the state, so the state of North Carolina, and pulled the model that's currently uh representing the Walnut Creek area. It's a um HAC HMS model, which is recognized by FEMA. So this is a FEMA uh a FEMA-accepted method uh that we utilize. So we got that model and we took the flows uh from that model and inserted our um district into that to see uh what the effects would be. Um you'll note that do at the analysis points for South Wilmington Street, the 100-year flow is approximately 5,000 CFS or um about just over 9,000 down at Rochester Heights area near uh right at State Street. So you you'll note that the flow almost doubles from our site up down to State Street. And this is because part of the drainage area, you'll see that that's left out is Wildcat Branch to the south. But then there's also um Rocky Branch, which comes from NC State's campus and other places up there, Dorothea Dix as well, I believe. Um so from there, we inserted our site into uh the model that we received. Uh you know, used conservative, very conservative numbers and what the land cover would look like. Could I get a next slide? And due to that, you'll see that there's uh three, three curves here. The uh orange curve is, it says HMS current. So that's currently the condition that the drainage basin is in. Now, the grace, the gray line, which almost mirrors that that orange um line, is if we were to insert our site in as uh the development. And again, like I said, this this analysis is conservative. So we haven't accounted for any stormwater controls yet. But this is just letting the the runoff uh get out of the site, which is one of the things we talked about with staff previously is, you know, holding water back possibly may cause uh discharge from our site to align more with discharge from upstream areas. As you'll see here, the uh time to the peak, we we use a 24-hour storm where the peak of the storm is generally at the around the 12-hour mark. So for reference, 720 minutes is a 12-hour, is 12 hours into the storm, which is about the peak intensity of the rainfall event. So you'll note down there that just before 720 is when uh our site has its maximum flow, which is about 795 CFS. But then you'll note that the two curves above don't peak until um around four hours later um with much greater flows. So you're seeing all that water from upstream coming down from Walnut Creek. And you'll also note um when I, when I get to the summaries that uh actually at Wilmington Street, because we are, because the the water is getting out faster than what the natural condition allows, the the model, though very small, did actually show a decrease in flows uh by getting that water out quickly. Next slide. And then we see State Street here. Um this is down by Rochester Heights, very similar uh kind of curve. You see the the um HMS model current, that's the current condition. And again, the gray line representing undetained development at our site. You'll see that uh the time of concentration, I mean, the the peak flows are hit at around 847, 848 minutes. That shifts by about a minute due to our site there, uh but nothing, nothing large there. Um and you'll also note that this this area actually peaks slightly for uh South Wilmington. And you might question, well, why is that? And and from what we're able to see, it looks like, as I said earlier, Rocky Branch and and Wildcat Branch to the south, that intersect and and come into Walnut Creek between South Wilmington Street and South State Street actually have a large contributing factor on the uh peak flow at this portion of um Walnut Creek. Next slide, please. So you'll see, this is a a summary of the results. So at South Wilmington Street, you'll see that there was actually a negative uh, there was a decrease in flow of about 30 CFS, which in the in the scope of, you know, thousands of CFS is is very small. But you'll also note um that there was not, there was a slight change to the time of peak, which is representative somewhat of our flows getting out a little more quickly. Um and then that we had a max flow from our site of about seven, about 800 CFS, um which happens prior to uh this peak, which is again, kind of the the theories that we had and and wanted to to explore with this model. And then again, at State Street, you'll see um the discharge here actually increases eight CFS. Uh but again, eight CFS out of 9,000 and some is really immeasurable. Um there, uh you're seeing that the the, again, the time to peak is is um brought back by one minute, again, representative of the fact that our water is getting out of the basin um more quickly than um some other conditions. And then uh again, at this, at this point, the max increases is uh only about 250 CFS at a point uh much earlier in the storm. And the uh max, and the uh time at the maximum is uh about 741 minutes. So that's, you know, about 20 minutes after the the most intense part of the storm. So if you think about that, it starts really raining hard and you got about 21 minutes on the site until it gets past South Wilmington, I mean uh South State Street. And uh I think that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Does the applicant um have any additional to um other members, the applicant team, want to speak?
I think uh I think that's it for our for our presentation. Uh as you can see, uh that all of these findings, we're assuming no stormwater uh devices at all. So uh we're we're confident that we'll be able to make these numbers even better. And um that's where we're trying to discern the right pathway and right complement of um of components to the condition to deliver uh the the best scenario possible for our our downstream neighbors. And so uh with that, we'll we'll certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um and um thank you for that presentation on the stormwater analysis. I'm getting some comments from um commissioners that there's some concern that we weren't able to see this report prior to the meeting. And so um I think what we should do is hold questions on this particular, that particular aspect of the presentation until we've all had a chance to review it um as well as as the public. Um. And I I see Commissioner Winter's hand up. Is can it, can it wait momentarily?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I I would like to move to um comments from the public. If you have a quick comment that you'd like to make in advance in front of that, that's fine.
Thank you. And it's about this, since we're right on that topic. So we haven't seen, and has this been distributed anywhere else? Has anyone else seen this outside of the um the applicant in real time as we're looking at it? It's, has it been made visible um a lot in one of?
We we reviewed it with uh staff earlier today to ensure that it was uh that they endorsed it. They had their preliminary review and felt like it was valid. However, we want them to be able to have the time to say it it a hundred percent they are endorsing it uh before we were to open it up to the public. However, that that's, that was just intended to uh have that checked. But we're certainly willing to uh publish that report and uh, you know, it, we don't have a problem with that at all.
You don't say that again, please. You don't have what?
We don't have a problem with that at all. We're very happy to publish it and share it.
Well, good. Thank you. I just, just one more comment because we're going back to our last conversation um about the availability of the information. Um and I'll tell you right now, it seems to be technical overload for me. So I look forward to getting into this information um and being able to review it so I can speak to it intelligently. Um so thank you, as well as the the staff, as well as community. Thank you.
Okay, and um I see Commissioner McIntosh hand up. If this is a brief comment, um if not, I'd like to move to the public comment.
I just wanna underline that this document was promised to the commission in advance of our meeting by Mr. Gaylord. And you know, there was no way for us or the public to prepare based on the document we were promised. Just wanted to.
Thank you. So.
Yes, I I promise.
Recommendation on the report is that we appreciate um have uh the applicant presenting it today and introducing it to us. We will not have a discussion on the content of the report today since we've not had a chance to review it. And I don't think we can have a a very fruitful discussion. And I don't think we can have a very fruitful discussion on that. But we do have another meeting planned and we can take up discussion of that at that time. Okay. And so with that, I would like to take public comment. There are several members of the public in the meeting today who may want to provide comments. And I would ask the moderator to introduce the speakers one at a time. And I asked the speakers to be respectful of time and to not be duplicative or repeat items. Could the moderator introduce the first speaker, please?
Yes, the first speaker that we'll have is Bob Geary.
Thank you, Jason. I had not intended to speak, but I sent a question to staff in the chat, and so I guess I'm being allowed to ask it. The height guidance in the comprehensive plan is in, I'm looking at it now. Table LU2, recommended height designations. In a regional mixed use center, which I think this is said to be, the edge of that maximum four stories, general area of it, seven stories, and near a transit stop, up to 20 stories. So I'm amazed at the staff analysis that says a project of this scale, asking for 40 stories, relatively undefined, is considered consistent with the comprehensive plan. My understanding is we adopted form-based zoning 10 years ago or so to allow developers to have flexibility in design of projects. And the one thing we asked them to do was tell us, how big is your project? What's the height of it? We were going to measure the, the intensity of a project by how tall it is. This application continues to have no design details whatsoever, combined with a maximum height asked for of 40 stories. One of our friends yesterday said, there is no plan for this. This is asking for a rezoning with no plan whatsoever for what will be built there. I was also confused by the storm. Lord knows, I'm not a stormwater expert. But when the McAdams guy said, well, we put our development into the model. What development? We, we don't know what you're planning to build. We don't know what the lot coverage is intended to be. We don't know what the stormwater impacts are going to be. Did you just put your empty site into the model? And guess what? It didn't make the numbers any worse. I didn't follow that at all. Finally, I would say equitable development around transit. That policy seems to require that a, that a, that an applicant commit in the zoning conditions to affordable housing at transit stops in order to be considered for a rezoning. It isn't, rezone me and we'll talk about affordable housing later if the city is willing to pay for it because we're not. Now, that's not what the EDAT policy says, or at least I don't think that's what it says. I think it says that the applicant will commit to a percentage of affordable housing in the plan. And then we can talk about how it gets funded. I'm not opposed to using a TIG grant or an equity fund for the city to help the developer provide affordable housing. But the developer needs to commit to it in the first place. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Our next speaker is Hua Hua.
Hey, can you hear me? Great. My name is Hua Hua. I'm a member of the local Sierra Club and I'm here to speak against rezoning as these 1320 as it is right now. Because the proposal is things 145 acres of land is not just a change to a small parcel. It's going to change the entire city and the livelihood of everyone who lives here. And yet, King Realty has only done the bare minimum of what they consider to be community engagement. Even that is less than adequate. Because if there's truly adequate partnership and community engagement in the past half a year, why do you now have organizations like One Wake, Partners in Environmental Justice, Global Raleigh, Interface Creation Care, and recently Sierra Club Capital Group, asking members and supporters to personally send out letters to City Council on Planning Commission, calling for no development without commitment to stormwater management, affordable housing, and most importantly, demanding for a plan that must be agreed upon by communities that live in the city. And why did so many community members say they weren't aware of, of this plan when church went door to door asking? The analysis presented today is not enough. This is the first time I and many of my neighbors seen this at this meeting. And before this proposal moves any further, I would say the public should and must have time to review the analysis that was just provided and offer comments to the city to determine if it is truly valid. At the very least, I would like to know what the Chris Bass Engineering, who has recently spoken, makes of this. We have heard many times what King Realty is proposing and what I have not seen or would personally like to see, our presentation proposals by the residents within the 1,000 feet development or even residents of Rochester Heights are what they want to see. So let's have the city base that off of what the community's interest. And especially since the meeting just discussed participatory budgeting. So let's bring impacted community residents and bring them in then so that they can decide how they want to improve the city for a change. So please act to show your respect for the longtime community residents. As you know, right now, many of the organizations are now watching in the middle of having this national election. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is John Reese.
Yes, Alan. Okay, again, my name is John Reese. I spoke at the October 23rd Planning Mission Meeting as a representative of Interfaith Creation Care of the Triangle, who is a network of 275 individuals from 65 faith communities. The meetings of October 22nd and 23rd left me with additional concerns about lack of detail and the rush to approve the project. Therefore, I strongly urge the Planning Commission to approve this rezoning request only when these issues have been addressed. The downtown south project should be subject to the rules proposed in the newest draft of the City of Raleigh Stormwater Manual and should be subject to the conditions recommended by Chris Bass Engineering. Happy to hear that you're working with One Wake, although it appears that the project is moving a little too fast for effective input from the nearby communities. Kane Realty must commit to a binding community benefits agreement with full input from the surrounding community. The tax increment grant proposed by Kane Realty would allow Kane Realty and anyone he sells to, to pay property taxes only on the current value of the property. This will be significantly less than the tax than they would pay on the, the value after development. I have concerns with this untried approach. I still haven't heard specifics in Kane's plan for affordable housing. And a major reason for Kane's rush for approval appears to be his desire to purchase the property by the end of the year. While we sympathize with the complexities of such a massive project, we do not think Kane's deadline should dictate the rezoning approval. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, very much.
So next we have.
Good afternoon. My name is Carmen Socken. I am happy to speak today about this rezoning process. And I have additional questions after reading through some of the land use planning and doing a little other research. I'm wondering, one, if the fact that the, the, the property sits on top of Walnut Creek would make it eligible for a critical area in the land use plan, since that is part of the floodplain. I believe that is under the, in the parts and open space conservation category. And I'm also curious if this rush to build the stadium or the sports arena at this point is because of the Wake County Convention and Visitors Bureau's program study that was done a couple of years ago called the Wake County Destination Strategic Plan, which they are now calling Destination 28. This is also, one of the recommendations in that plan was that the city have a indoor or sports arena. And they referenced the soccer stadium in that plan. So that was built, I mean, that plan came out in 2018. Of course, there was something else on the, on the table or a different site for a soccer stadium. And I understand that now it's been changed to a sports arena, entertainment and sports arena. But all of this seems to be part and parcel of a much larger plan. And so I would hope that all of that would be taken into consideration as the zoning process continues. Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to continuing to work with the city, the community, and the developer to make sure that this plan takes care of the entire city because this is the biggest thing that the City of Raleigh has ever seen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Tatiana Height.
Thank you. And I had a couple of visuals as well that were supposed to be loaded up. Is that coming?
Matt Clem, do you have those visuals?
I do not, Ms. Height. If you email them to me now. Send them to Ira, okay. Ira, if you can email those to me, I can pull them up. Or if you can let me know where they're saved, I'm happy to do that as well.
If the commission desires, we could go to the next speaker while we get the visuals queued up and then come back.
Okay.
That would be great. Let's move on to the next. And I apologize, I'm having some issues with my speaker.
The next speaker will be Mary Abrams.
Great, thank you. Hi, I'm Mary Abrams with the Wake Audubon. We're a local chapter of the National Audubon Society. And we're a conservation organization dedicated to preserving birds in the places that they and people need today and tomorrow. We echo the concerns raised by representatives of environmental justice, One Wake, Chris Bass, and others on October 23rd regarding the need to address stormwater, environmental justice, and equitable development issues relating from this case. Southeast Raleigh is already environmentally stressed. So any nearby development should receive the utmost care and deliberate review by the city and community before it goes forward. There's no need to rush. We oppose the rezoning request in its current form, in its current form. The U.S. lost about 30% of its birds since 1970 for many causes, including habitat loss, habitat fragmentation, and bird strikes. I did have some comments I wanted to share about that regarding floodwater, but we'll defer those to next time. I will say that if this rezoning request is approved, we ask that the use of native plants be conditions of rezoning. Once established, native plants use fewer resources and host the birds and other wildlife eat. They would also soften the transition from natural area to other mixed use. Also, if this rezoning request is approved, we ask that bird-friendly building techniques be conditions of rezoning to minimize the likelihood of bird strikes. Bird-friendly techniques can take many forms, such as spreaded glass, appropriate landscaping near buildings, and appropriate lighting at night to reduce glare and light reaching the sky and minimize the effect on people, plants, and wildlife. Bird-friendly techniques can be included at little cost when incorporated early in planning. As cities like New York and Chicago have found, these strategies save operating energy costs. So they are win-win. These conditions would be especially important, given the rezoning request for at a construction height and proximate to creek, which both present increased hazards to birds. And that's all I have. Like I said, we'll reengage on the stormwater discussion in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Tatiana Height back and we do have the visuals. She sent, called up and ready to go.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So my name is Tatiana Height and I'm the Program Director of Partners for Environmental Justice, also known as PEJ. PEJ has been very vocal throughout this rezoning application process and our advocacy for equitable development, low-impact development, and green stormwater infrastructure. We've been pleased with the vocalized intentions of addressing these items and are invested in seeing those intentions come to fruition. Last week, the commission and city stormwater staff had a chance to review a letter of stormwater requests from Chris Bass Engineering. Today, we would like to reaffirm the importance of taking those requests seriously and implementing them. This is more than a technical issue, it is one of common sense. It's common sense to go above and beyond the stormwater requirements and to make every effort to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community residents and the natural environment. So this first slide is, is something that folks may or may not have seen, depending on if you're a member of the public or if you're a planning commission member. We sent this to just showing the increases in stormwater runoff that could result from impervious surfaces. If you could go to the next visual, please, the next page. Recently, the City of Raleigh sought to build an educational boardwalk at the Walnut Creek Wetland Park, but it was deemed unallowable because of the, because this small development has the potential to raise the base flood elevation. If this small boardwalk, barely more than a half mile from the proposed downtown south development, has the potential to raise the base flood at an elevation, imagine what a mega development such as the one before us has the potential to do. Two of the three downtown south parcels directly coincide with the FEMA floodplain. And therefore, it makes no sense to allow any development in any parts of the floodplain on these parcels or future developments for that matter. Further, since the city is currently considering tax changes as it pertains to development in the floodplain, it only makes sense to take that into account in this case. PEJ cannot support this rezoning or the subsequent development unless our requests are made a part of the rezoning approval. In closing, we would like Kane to speak to whether or not they would be willing to secure financial compensation to residents for downstream adverse stormwater impact should they occur. And we would also like to note that the Walnut Creek Action Team, of which PEJ is a part, is willing to partner with Kane to apply for grant funding to implement GSI measures. We will be very interested in hearing if Kane is interested in such a partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jane Harrison.
I'm on the speaker list. I'm sorry, I don't think I should be on the speaker list.
Okay, I'll move to the next speaker. Next speaker is Mary Bell Haye. Actually, I'm not seeing her on the meeting. I'm going to move on to the next speaker. If I did happen to miss you, please just message the host and let me know. Next speaker I have is Sarah Wackowski. Let me get you unmuted. Okay, Sarah, you're here.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Sarah Wackowski and I am an Extension Associate with a Professional Engineers License at NC State University. Please note, I am not speaking on behalf of the university. And I am sharing my own opinions with you regarding the proposed downtown south project. One aspect of my work focuses on how well green stormwater infrastructure manages stormwater. The main goal of green stormwater infrastructure is to ensure that the amount of stormwater leaving a site after development is less than or equal to the amount of stormwater leaving a site before development. Green stormwater infrastructure addresses water quantity and quality in both residential and commercial developments. One example of a successful commercial development using green stormwater infrastructure is the market at Colonnade Center near the intersection of Six Forks Road and Strickland Road in North Raleigh. Stormwater infrastructure at the Colonnade Center includes an underground detention chamber detention chamber, an infiltration gallery, underground and above-ground cisterns for large rain barrels, above-ground swales and bio-retention. Bio-retention are shallow depressions in the landscape that are backfilled with engineered media and plants to remove pollutants from stormwater. The underground detention chamber and infiltration gallery and bio-retention reduce stormwater by allowing stormwater to soak into the ground and/or evaporate into the air. The cisterns use the collected runoff to meet non-drinking water demands that include toilet flushing. In addition to managing stormwater, cisterns can reduce monthly water bill costs. For example, NC State University helped install four 10,000-gallon cisterns in Martin County for non-drinking water use, and the property owner recovered the cost of installation within three years. NC State University monitored how well the practices at the Colonnade Center reduced and treated stormwater and compared their results to monitoring data collected from a nearby site, retrofitted with swales and a dry pond. NC State University found for every 100 raindrops that fell onto the site, 98 of them never left the site. The water either soaked into the ground, evaporated into the air, indoors used to meet non-drinking water demands. In contrast, only 50 out of 100 raindrops stayed on the nearby site. In terms of water quality, the nearby site exported 23 to 85 times more pollutants than the market at Colonnade Center project. I shared these examples with you to emphasize that green stormwater infrastructure on commercial sites is feasible, effective, and aesthetically pleasing. More importantly, green stormwater infrastructure is possible in tight soils that are typically found in Raleigh. If the city of Raleigh approves this development, I request that the Planning Commission and City Council consider making the conditional use zoning recommendations for stormwater management that were developed by Chris Bass Engineering as a part of the rezoning application. The city of Raleigh has a responsibility to serve all of their citizens, and it is crucial that those who will be directly impacted by this proposed development have their needs met. Thank you for this opportunity to speak at today's meeting.
Thank you for your comments. I would just reiterate, as we hear from additional speakers that try to not be repetitive in the comments that they're making.
We have a few people who have called in. That is all the speakers who are logged in through their computer on the speaker list. We may have some call-in users who wanted to speak. I'm going to unmute them and see if they have comments. And if anybody else is here and did want to speak, please send a chat message to the host, and I will get you on. So let me, I'm going to unmute a call-in user with a number that begins 919-539. So you're on. If you have some comments, I'll just mute you back if you don't. I'm going to unmute call-in participant with the number that begins 919-749. Same process. Jump in if you have some comments. I'll just mute you right back if you don't.
No comments.
And one more with the number that begins 919-349. So I believe that's all the speakers. Again, if I missed someone who did want to speak, please message the host, and I will let the commissioners know. I believe that was our last speaker.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to make note that we have received, I think probably somewhere in the ballpark of 300 emails from the public, and that we have been reading them and do appreciate them. So thank you for that as well. So what I'd like to do is give the applicant an opportunity to respond to the questions from the public if they want to do so at this time. And if not, we can move to discussion with the commissioners.
Yes, a couple things I'd like to adjust, just for clarity, that we have committed not to build in the floodplain. That was a request I heard on a few examples. And so we absolutely are committed to that. And we are interested in exploring every other, every further partnership and group that we can discuss with. We were on One Wake's, their launch as an organization less than a month ago, was on that call with John Kane, talking with Reverend Taylor. And Reverend Taylor, of course, is the pastor at St. Embrose Church, and Chris Bass has done a lot of work for them, and they're also part of Partner for Environmental Justice. So there's a lot of overlap here, and we're talking to sort of the same folks for the different organizations. But we are in deep discussion and want to come to an amenable conclusion. Unfortunately, Chris Bass has been out this week, so he has not been able to be in the discussions. But we look forward to sitting down with him as well. And as I already mentioned, we've got a meeting for tomorrow morning with Reverend Taylor and some of the folks from One Wake.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I would like to allow for questions and comments from commissioners. And I would ask that you be recognized to speak. I'm sure we have some questions or comments. Commissioner McIntosh.
Yeah, so going back to the financial information, I guess my question is for staff, and I'm not as versed in this realm. But as I understand it, the land for this development is designated as an opportunity zone, and I'm wondering if you could talk about how opportunity zones works and work and what the expectations are with them of a developer.
Sure. An opportunity zone is simply an area in which investors can defer taxation on capital gains by taking the money from the capital gains and investing it in an opportunity fund, which is then invest in projects within the opportunity zone. In terms of what the expectations are, essentially, there are none. You can invest on anything as long as it is a project that is located within the opportunity zone. But there are no performance standards associated with such projects. And it was a provision that was created in the 2017 Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. In fact, to my knowledge, very few people knew it was in there until after the act was passed.
Yes, I've heard reference to community benefits agreements being associated with opportunity zones, so I thought there might be some link or ensuring.
No, I mean, you can kind of, you can kind of think of the opportunity zone as simply providing access to a type of capital that would not be available outside the zone.
Right. Okay, thank you. I guess the impression I had as a layperson was that this was a benefit going to a developer, sort of as a reward for trying to improve an area that previously wasn't attractive to develop. And the implication was that that benefit should help serve the existing community. It's my impression. And of course, I'm not in that.
There's, there really is, there really are no strings attached to opportunity fund money. And to the extent it's a benefit for the developer, the only potential benefits are if the expectation of the equity return on the money is lower because there's an associated tax benefit, that's potentially one benefit. So the capital may be a little cheaper than other sources of capital, or may just simply be more available, because now there's money that can be spent in this area, not that area. The only benefit that was assumed was that there would be economic development within the zones as opposed to somewhere else. But that was basically it.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Winters?
Thank you. Okay, well, I have a series of questions, so bear with me. The first one is going back to the text change that has been spoken about today as well as in the last meeting. I was unable to find it. Can you backsend that to us so we can see what the verbiage is and where it is in terms of implementation? I think I just, I really want to see what it is, because it was, they went through it so quickly during last meeting. I want to look at it further. So that's one. Or if someone can speak to it now and make it available on the charter, make it available, make it publicly available, and the legs on it where it is. I'd appreciate that. That's one. Two, and when we started the meeting today, it's interesting, because this is the first time I heard of an MOU that Blaney spoke of. Blaney, can you speak more to that? Because I wasn't aware of an MOU being in play or under consideration, and it just seemed like it kind of caught everyone else off guard.
Yes, I'd be happy to. Let me, I'm logged in. I hang up my phone. My internet was going in and out, so I was logged in on my phone and on my computer. But that was part of the challenge earlier. So I was just going to say, where I got that from was at our last meeting on this topic. My notes say the applicant said that without this financing, the project is not viable, and they're dependent on the equity fund. We have proposed an MOU with council, and they have directed staff to provide feedback and get ready for the citizen engagement process. So that's why, that's what I had in my notes that the applicant mentioned at the last meeting. So that's where I got that from. And the applicant may have additional information on that topic.
Yes. So Commissioner Winters, before you move to your additional questions, I thought maybe the applicant could address some questions.
Yes, we submitted a proposed MOU to council at their public hearing. I guess we're going to have to go, yeah, I think it was, was it on the 20th, I believe? Yeah. So we submitted that at the public hearing on the 20th.
Commissioner Winters, does that answer your question? I can't hear you. I think you're muted.
I hit the wrong button. Think it's going to do something. I will defer to Commissioner Lantman in a moment, but I'll go back and look at my questions again. Cheers.
Thank you.
Bonner, I don't, I watched that video. I don't recall anything that was submitted. Was it discussion, or was it a submission?
There was a submission, obviously, by email. I wasn't there in the chambers, so we did submit it via email. And we can distribute that to you all if you all would like.
That'd be cool. Thank you. Thanks, Winters. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Winters, are you ready for your next question?
Okay, so I think it was answered in terms of the stormwater analysis that you did go by, that you did float by staff, no pun intended. And that Mr. Bass was not available. So he will be getting a copy of this as well, because when I'm looking at the list that One Wake has, as well as the Sierra Club, and now the Autobahn Society, they were asking that, that he look at this as well. So that will be done?
Yes, yes, absolutely. We submitted it to staff yesterday, and, you know, it's public information at that point. So we're happy to, I mean, we'd be happy anyway, but we're happy to share that and allow that to be distributed.
Okay, I think those are all of my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Winters. Commissioner Fox.
During the public comment, Ms. Tatyana Height had some very specific questions of the applicant. I'm wondering if the applicant can address those. I can do a poor job of paraphrasing them, or we can pull the commenter back on.
Yeah, I think I got them. I think it was the prohibition of building in the floodplain, because if a pathway would cause a negative impact, then clearly, grading in the floodplain. And that is the condition that we submitted, that Molly talked through, I believe it was condition nine. And so that is the condition that precludes us from building in the floodplain, which is mimicking the SMAC recommendations. And that's the condition that while that SMAC recommendation will get authorized within the next several months, that condition makes, ensures that there isn't a site plan submitted in the time between now and when the text change is adopted, to ensure that those protections are perpetual and immediate. And then the request about paying for downstream flooding in the homes and downstream, we need to, we need to make sure this doesn't flood. We need to prove scientifically that we are not making the condition any worse. And that's a mathematical exercise. I can't fathom what mathematical exercise would be needed to enter into to take on the liability of any flooding that were to happen at any point in the future. So I wouldn't know how to begin with that. And I don't think there's a way to approach that, certainly not, not any way that I'm aware. And beyond that, it, we can't get to that point. We've got to make the situation certainly no worse. And our goal is to ensure that it's better.
Thank you. Commissioner McIntosh?
Well, I've written in my notes that one of Tatyana Height's questions was asking for a partnership with Kane on stormwater, with Partnership for Environmental Justice, that they're wanting to make sure they're involved.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I had made a blanket statement after the, all the comments about we're absolutely open to partnerships, and that remains. We will partner with anybody to talk through how we can best deliver on the goals set forth in this development and the goals that are set forth by the community.
Commissioner Lantman.
Thanks. I just want to congratulate Matt on a great presentation earlier. That was really, really helpful. And I'm wondering if you can distribute those slides, because I found that very informative. And then stormwater, those are big shoes to fill. I'm wondering if you might be able, when you do your analysis of the reports that you've received, to put it in the layman terms, such that, you know, similar to what Matt was, it doesn't have to be the same, but, you know, so that we can understand exactly what's going to be happening. And so I think some of the discussion is that, okay, they're not going to develop on, you know, potential floodplain, so that's good. But I'm sure there's runoff. And so stormwater, can you speak to the runoff that will occur? Obviously, we're not going to be in the floodplain, but there's going to be some other issues, I think, for downstream. And then with that, I know we have a text change that's coming in and limiting further development on flood, 100-year floodplain areas. But this, with the runoff, it could widen that. And so I'm wondering if you can, again, somewhat in layman's terms, educate us on what the downstream impact is going to be.
I think that's a question for the applicant.
The staff.
Staff, sorry.
Yeah.
Hey, this is Ben Brown from Stormwater. Yeah, so we got the analysis last night and met with the applicant this morning. And so we can do up a summary report once we have comments back. I already told, or we already told them a few comments we have back, but I did say that I want to get, dive deeper into it and get them some more comments back to it as well. So I guess the report, would you want it to be like when we're ready to, for lack of a better term, approve the study?
It's for when we're presenting to the planning commission again, just so we can understand exactly all the nuances that are being discussed and the impact. Impact is critical.
Yeah, no, I agree. I just want to know the timing of it, of when you were wanting to get a report because I'm thinking I'm going to send comments, we're going to send comments back to them probably like probably the next couple of days, but, but that won't necessarily be the final report because they're gonna, because they're going to make those adjustments that we asked for. Because I, because I mean, the first thing I asked for was a couple more cross-sections to see different points as to where the flooding might be, things like that. And they agreed with that and they were fine with it. But it's just, once we get the report to an approval stage, I feel better giving a presentation than about the report, if that makes sense.
Would it be a reasonable timeframe to be able to get us something to look at in advance of our next committee of the whole meeting on the 5th? Not at the meeting, but in advance of it so we could study it then? Would that give you time to do the back and forth that you need?
At that point, I could probably only guarantee that we would give you kind of our comments on the, on the current supplemental. Because I was thinking that, that I'd have comments done by, by Monday the 2nd back to them. And that puts us only a couple of days away from the, we have the whole meeting at that point. So you may not get much of the back and forth on that. But I'm happy to do a presentation, a report about our review of the study.
Okay, thank you. That would be great. I see some, yes, shaking heads, yes. Commissioner McIntosh, did you have your hand up first or was it Commissioner Bennett?
I'll defer to Bennett, yeah. Thank you. I was just going to say, this speaks to some of the comments that we have received about this process being rushed. I think the staff deserves to have the time to review the analysis, to be able to submit comments, to be able to get a revised document back. We're rushing everything and why are we rushing it? Let's just do what we need to do to allow the process to happen in a way that's transparent and that will allow the public to trust the process. If we're rushing through it, how can you trust that Ben, for example, has time to really look at this? Then we're asking him to break it down for us so we can understand it. Today is Thursday, our next meeting is Thursday. As a consultant myself, it's kind of tough to do all of that in a week. And we're asking for it before the meeting. So we need it like Tuesday, so we have Wednesday to review it. I think what we're asking is unreasonable and it's all part of this rushing the process, which is causing the public, and I think some of us, to have some concern about the integrity of the process. And I don't think any of us want the integrity of the process to be questioned. So let's just slow down and do what we need to do so we can have a product that everybody feels has been vetted properly and everybody has had an opportunity to comment on. And I think that's a win for everybody versus rushing through something and then everybody is upset because it went too fast for anybody to have any meaningful involvement.
Thank you for those comments. And I, along those lines, I think we did hear clearly that what we're probably looking at as, at is a report or a summary at our next committee of the whole meeting on the 5th and probably not have, you know, not have it beforehand. So we'll be introduced to that summary report at the next committee of the whole meeting. And then I think it would be reasonable to need a little bit of time to review it and digest it and then have time to discuss it after that. Commissioner McIntosh?
So I was, had the same concern as Commissioner Bennett and she stated it much better than I could have. But I'd just add that, you know, if we get this report next week, that's not enough time for us or the public to prepare. And that starts to sound like we need another meeting scheduled after next week so that we can have a full conversation about this.
Commissioner Lampman?
I want to make sure that I go in appropriate order. I do have a lot of questions, so I'm sorry. But one is, actually, I'm just going to clear up before we move on to timing. I have a lot of questions about timing. Ken, I posed the question because I know that one of the callers, Carmen Cuthrin, brought up the critical area in the park and open space. I just wanted, if you could make your comments, I'll look for her so that she knows.
So yeah, there's, on the future land use map, there is a hashed overlay that was just sort of added to highlight some environmental sensitive, environmentally sensitive areas and it mostly corresponds to the 100-year floodplain. It has not been something that we have invoked in terms of doing a consistency analysis, largely because of, there's not a direct relationship between land uses and intensity of development and impacts on the floodplain because, you know, impervious surface could be some pavement or it could be a 40-story building, but the footprint's the same. I mean, in terms of the, what it, what it does to stormwater infiltration, there's not a lot of difference there. And we had historically allowed you to fill in half of the floodplain in order to elevate it so you could develop it. Now, the pending text change is going to alter that, which would provide much better protection for floodplains than we've had. But we haven't, you know, although this area is mapped on the future land use map, it hasn't been part of our consistency determinations. But it is a piece of information that tells you if there's floodplain on the area.
And is that area showing on the future land use map that's in our packet?
Generally, no. If you look at the large format map that's kind of in the paper copy of the comp plan, it's there. It is not on iMaps and it's not typically shown on that part of the map either. I mean, on the, on the maps that are in the staff reports either.
So I'm not sure I was fully following that. It might be useful to have some version of that graphic accessible to us so that we can follow along.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lampman, did you have a follow-up?
Does anybody else, I want to make sure it's all, you know, transitions well. Is everybody else okay on water? Okay, because I wanted to talk about timing because I know Nicole brought it up as well. So, all right, so in terms of timing, I'm wondering, you know, Carmen Cuthrin also brought up the Wake County Plan, the 2018 Plan. But I think it's really important because everybody's mentioning the rushing, so to speak. And one, I'm hoping it's a benefit. One of the reasons why I came out here was my experience in Denver and seeing Denver grow so rapidly. So to be able to provide that perspective, I'm hoping is helpful. Every city has its own personality, so I think that that's just something to be mindful of. But one of the things that Denver did really, really well was work with the chamber and the city to advocate for businesses to come down. They worked with local businesses to build out the community. And in specific areas, they did target areas that they wanted for major development such as LODO. And that's one of the areas that I think is very similar to Raleigh's kind of persona of wanting to create a lively environment, a sports attraction area. It was built in a, in a underdeveloped area. It was planned, the starting of that plan occurred in 1988 and it wasn't completed until well after, like there were stages that were done in like 2020, I'm sorry, 2000 and thereafter. So this was a long-term planning of the entire city. So a stadium, I think, is a very big deal because it brings in new economy. It brings the, whichever team we're able to secure is going to be driving a lot of that development. So for example, you know, and I'm sorry to make references to Denver, I'm just only hoping it's helpful, but, you know, the Denver Broncos brings in one feeling versus the Denver Nuggets versus, you know, the, you know, the Rockies. So, you know, I think there's like a personality that you end up developing in that area and it's through thoughtful planning. So to be rushing in a two-year period, I, I wanted, that, that's really not enough time for something that is so substantial, that's really going to create a characteristic of the entire city. So with that, I wanted to kind of get a little bit of history on what was the start of this idea? How did it come to fruition? When did it come to fruition? What were some of the dialogues? So if you can run through, I know you have a timeline slide, but I'm wanting to know like, when these plans started? What was the idea? And then go from there. And then I'll have additional questions, so.
Thank you. So I think that's a question for the applicant?
Yeah.
And before the applicant speaks, I did want to just make a comment that, you know, I think we've gotten a lot of questions also from the public about timing and, and rushing. And I just want to point out that currently the planning commission has a really robust work plan and we have many cases that we are reviewing, that we will be reviewing. And the gravity and scale of this rezoning, you know, has required extra meetings dedicated solely to this case. And we, we, we're trying to accommodate that as the best we can at this time. And in terms of pace, you know, typically the planning commission has 90 days, roughly three monthly meetings to review a case. And so that's just kind of the overview picture of where we are as a commission. And if the applicant would like to respond to Commissioner Lampman's question?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Downtown South is, I was able to look up LODO and, and I've heard of the area and visited it, but I wasn't familiar with some of the, the history of it. And it's 23 blocks of historic downtown Denver with 127 historic structures. Downtown South has no historic structures. There are, it is a historically undeveloped parcel with some industrial uses and some other, some other uses, but primarily industrial. And the, one of the components that I've often heard in Raleigh is that all of the interchanges of the Beltline are developed and amenitized except for the southeastern quadrant of the Beltline. And this is one of those, one of those interchanges. And traditionally, there hasn't been sufficient income to support retail restaurant proliferation and thus the, the interchanges have not developed. I think if, if we were, certainly if we were talking about building a entertainment and sports venue in another part of the city, I think there'd be a lot of folks who'd be saying, why isn't this coming into the areas that have not received investment in the past? And the, the road to get here was one that, that was expansive over time. It began with Steve Malick approaching John, about John Kane, about how we doing something big for the city. And he wanted to bring an MLS franchise to Raleigh and bring a stadium to downtown. We looked in the downtown proper and there wasn't a suitable site with what everybody typically considers downtown. And then we realized that the southern gateway to the city is undeveloped, is in, or underdeveloped, has been underinvested. And this, this parcel of land provided an incredible opportunity to create a, an economic impact, a social impact, a cultural impact and an environmental impact and a positive way. And we began planning a year and a half ago and the, the initial kickoff of the, of the citizen engagement process was, was back in August of 2019. And the, the speed of the development relative to LODO, obviously LODO was many, many parcels and many, many different owners and certain, and historic structures and, and the development of that plan, I think, would probably be akin to a development of an area of downtown Raleigh with a significant amount of, of historical structures. And so I, I think it's, it's, it's a little bit apples to oranges because we're, we're not talking about a, you know, 23 blocks of the downtown that have 127 historic structures. We're talking about a greenfield site that is a ground-up development and a rezoning to accomplish that.
Okay, thanks. That was really helpful. How, how long ago did Steve Malick approach Kane?
I'm not sure the exact date. It was, it was, I want to say it was over two years ago.
Okay. And then I'm, I'm sure like the city was brought into that as well as a, like, hey, is this how we want to grow type of a conversation? Yes?
Yes, absolutely. There've been conversations ever since the, the site was identified and, and to determine the viability of it and the, the concept and now we're, and that was well-received. And, and we have, have really not had, had pushback until this process has began, which is typical. This is the public engagement process and this is the time where everyone's voices get heard and, and that's appropriate. And we're glad for that because it, it helps us to improve our case and, and learn from partners who know things we don't know.
Yeah, okay. I also, you know, as part of that planning, I do think, I guess, I can get this out of the way. One of the things that I'd like to see for next time is a list, and I know it might be cumbersome and time-consuming, but I think it's important to demonstrate, you know, the, the engagement that occurred. And so I'm wondering if you can provide a list of dates, times, and who was there of all the meetings that you had? That would include like on your bar chart, all the individual meetings you had because those folks will go and communicate to others and then some of the groups. I agree with your previous comment from last time where you said, you know, One Wake has just formed. Everybody's scrambling to, to get a, a, you know, a, you know, a group together to be able to have a voice. So I think that, I, I think that what we want to know though is how deep has that conversation gone? Looks like some people jumped, so I might've said something incorrect, so I'm going to pause there.
I think I saw Commissioner McIntosh's hand up first.
I just want to make a correction. I mean, there's been comments that One Wake is a new, untested organization. One Wake has an aggregate membership total in excess of 50,000 households with 44 member institutions. That's the current number on their website. They're focused on working together to implement systemic changes within society to achieve the common good. And they are, you know, it's churches in our community. It's 100-year-old churches. It's 150-year-old churches. It's churches all around Raleigh. It's people who are rooted in this community and care about the future of our city. And it's unfair to say it's a new organization. One Wake is trying to have a voice where our community has, our city has taken away our CACs. We don't have, with during COVID, our public meetings are faces on a screen of members of the planning commission and the city council, people who call in, we don't see their faces. If this was pre-COVID, we would be in the municipal building, in city council chambers, we'd be at the table at the front of the room. The room would be packed and, I lost my microphone. The room would be overflowing, there would be speakers in the hallway and there would be people in the hallway listening. One Wake is filling a very important gap right now. I'm sorry, I got angry.
I apologize. I was going off of, because I think one caller last time said that she didn't want to be the representative because it hadn't been formed yet or something. So if you can clarify, that's all I meant.
Yeah, and that, and that was Carmen Cuthrin, who has been leading the effort on the community on... Yeah, and that was Carmen Coffin, who has been leading the effort on the community, I'm sorry, the vocabulary, the community agreement piece. And she was just wanting to dot her i's and cross her t's and make sure that the organization agreed before she said they would. It wasn't about them not being, it wasn't about questioning them, it was just not having an agreement in place and not being able to speak for them until they had agreed. But that's very different than questioning the legitimacy of an organization.
Okay. I definitely appreciate that, because I, that's not how I understood it. And I think that that's even more credibility to state what was the level of engagement with One Wake and its constituents, and everyone along the way, to have, you know, a detail of, like, a roster of the outreach. Because I think Commissioner McIntosh has a very legitimate point of the number of folks that would be engaged in person. And she's absolutely right, be down the hall. I mean, we've seen that on smaller. Bonner, I know you've been on the Planning Commission, you've seen that. So this needs to have, you know, that extensive outreach, especially on something as large. This is going to shape the personality of Raleigh, and I think that that's important. Okay, that's, that's what I had on that one, to get that out of the way. I do want that list. I think it would be good for everybody. The other thing is, you know, again, going to Raleigh's personality. I think everybody here loves Raleigh, self-included, and I'm just new, relatively speaking. So it's a beautiful community. It's heartwarming, it's, you know, it's really quite wonderful. And when you compare it to some of the other cities that grow substantially really fast, and, you know, you want to make sure that you preserve the history and the culture of the community. So what does that look like? I had the great fortune of sitting on the Saratoga Raleigh Architectural Awards, and that was a real pleasure. And I was able to sit with the Board of Apairance and talk about the architecture that's going up in and around Raleigh. And there was criticism over the kind of sterile glass buildings that are going up. And, you know, one of the things that we've seen, you know, like, if we look at 70s architecture, you can definitely tell it's in the 70s. And, you know, it's, how is it going to be reflective of the community and what Raleigh is? I do think that this is a keystone of how Raleigh can be shaped. So personality with that comes communication with the community and understanding what the community, how do we reflect the community? I think I should stop there, but I, if, that's helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Winters.
Okay, thank you. I'll pick up where Commissioner Lampman left off. And some of the comments that I heard, let me just back up. Let me back up a little bit, because, Bonner, when you're saying that you're ready to partner or you're committed, what exactly are you committed to? Because are you committed to partnering? Are you committed to, what exactly is your commitment? Because you're saying you're committed to doing anything. So what exactly is your commitment specifically?
Commitment to meet with any potential partner, to learn about how we might work together. I think it would differ from partner to partner, but we're, we want to make sure that everybody knows, and that we're saying publicly, that we're willing to connect and learn about how we may partner together. There've been some new organizations that we mentioned today, and we'd love to learn about how we could collaborate.
Because it sounds like that those conversations have been ongoing before now. So it is encouraging to know that you are now ready to partner with and take their items of concern and begin to implement them. Because it doesn't sound as though implementation has really been happening, even with the conversations. So that's concerning. So that's one. Two, when we're talking about culture, I will say, I will say this personally, or the lack of culture, the question of culture, I take offense to that, because these are historically Black communities. They have a culture, full stop. And then the comment about, gotta breathe through that one, because that one, oh. And it is demeaning to suggest that there isn't a culture there, that it isn't, it's just demeaning to the residents who have been here. Just, again, full stop. Going to the comment about the development in the area, there was a, Bonner, you said something about, well, people will be asking, well, why didn't we develop in this area that's underserved? You may be right, but there's also the secondary, not even the secondary, the primary comment of. But then, in the development that's happening, and the investment that's happening, who will be able to enjoy that investment? They would be more concerned about being displaced. And the question then is, now, why now? Why this project that does not seem to be in the benefit of the community that currently exists? So I understand that question may be coming in terms of investment, but it's more so, well, why does it have to be an investment that will then cost us homes? That will cost us our environmental, cause more environmental impacts? Those are the questions, not just the, it's not just about the financial investment, but it's also the investment in the community and their safety and their quality of life. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Winters. And I'd like to just tag along onto that in a very, very, very small way, but specifically to the proposed conditions, and as it relates to the proposal for public art installation. We've had other projects come through that, you know, have specificity to those, and I'd like to see some specificity in the condition about acknowledging the history of the area, potentially involving local artists, artists of color, and also encouraging public input on what these art pieces might be. And these are just suggestions. I think, you know, it's up to the applicant how they might want to embellish that, but I think that's a small place to add something that is important. Commissioner Winters.
I'm sorry, thank you. And I, and thank you, Commissioner Hicks, for that, because we do understand that preserving history, especially history that is being rapidly lost in Raleigh and other parts, is important. So thank you for that. But there is one thing that has been somewhat bothering me. How did we come up with the name Downtown South? Because that seems to be now the label for this. How did that come about?
I could address that. It has been, and I'll just also address that, I certainly did not mean to imply that there is no culture in this area. The way I, obviously clumsily, was intended to say that sites A and B have had, have never been developed, and Site C has primarily never been developed. And so I was speaking to the sites themselves, certainly not the surrounding communities. And our full commitment is for the development to reflect the surrounding communities. And the way to get there is the plan that we've laid out before you. I went to school at Ligon and Hunter, right in the neighborhood, and so I know and understand the culture of the surrounding communities. And we fully intend to reflect that community by asking that community how to reflect that culture. We are committed to that, and we will continue to ask for feedback on how that, how the development can reflect the community. And, and so, you know, how Downtown South was named is because there, the parcels, having never been developed before, did not have an associated nomenclature. And, and the vision, from the beginning, was to create a downtown gateway, a southern downtown gateway. And so, and given that this is on the border of what's traditionally called southwest Raleigh and southeast Raleigh, it was posited as Downtown South, to help people understand where it was, and, and relative to downtown, and also included as part of downtown. And I also say, just to Jennifer's previous comment, the conversation about a downtown stadium has been happening for about 40 years. And the PNC Arena was, there were great hopes that it would go downtown. It ended up being where it is, west of Raleigh, and, and we lost that opportunity. But a downtown entertainment and sports venue or sporting area has been in discussion for a very long time.
Thank you. So, Mr. Gaylord, would you, would you be willing to provide some specific conditions as to how you can reflect the culture of the existing community there? And in some way, add some written specificity, so that, you know, as this moves forward, we have, we know that this will occur?
Yeah, certainly. We were, we crafted those conditions with staff's help, in their response to our application was to include those elements. And so that was being responsive to staff feedback, which I think is great feedback. And I think that's, your suggestions are further refinement of that, and we would love to explore that and include that. If there are similar conditions that you all have seen in the past, that you feel like adequately addressed the question at hand, we'd love to see those conditions so that we can replicate them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lampman.
This might be a question more for staff. I know that with the CACs, the CACs, like, I think that, just I feel that, you know, for the southeast Raleigh CAC to have heard about this, that communication, I think would have been a lot easier. What I think, and I could be wrong from what I'm understanding, but the, it is more difficult to get engagement. You know, I mean, if, if I'm new to a community, and I'm supposed to find all these groups, and I'm supposed to do a mailer within 1,000 feet, but how do I really meet the representatives of the community? And I know this is an ongoing conversation, but has it been thought that maybe we need to have a consultant who can help applicants reach out to the community, who knows who's who in various areas? Because I think it's a disadvantage to developers if they don't know. How do they, how do they educate everybody? I know there's ways to find out, but I think if we had somebody, that might be helpful.
Are you referring to a consultant in the, I'm under contract to the city or to the applicant?
And I don't know. Maybe it's something that needs to be created, in a sense, someone that, like, a community engagement consultant that can actually help work with developers to engage. Now, I mean, it's, with the CACs, that was kind of there, in a sense, because, you know, you could just tap into them. But this might create an opportunity for better engagement. It's only a thought.
Well, there is a comprehensive study of citywide community engagement that's going on, so that might be a good comment to forward into that study, as one of the things that could be looked at.
Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. The first one is about the historic resources and the comment about there being no historic resources. I realize there are no historic resources on the parcels. And I think this is sort of where we're, the disconnect is occurring in our conversations somewhat. Some of us are talking about the area, some of us are talking about the parcels. I recognize that, as a planning commission, looking at the rezoning, we are looking at the parcels. I get it, I understand that. But we have to look at the parcels within context of what's around them and the area. So that's when we start looking at the neighborhoods. So Rochester Heights, for example, is on the National Register of Historic Places, and I believe there are contributing structures in that district. So it would seem to me that there would need to be some attention paid to an area that's on the National Register of Historic Places, in terms of the impact that the development might have on that. I know it's not on the parcel, so there's no direct impact. But for example, if there were downstream flooding, you know, we don't know that there's going to be, that's an impact. Not only is that an impact to an historic area that's listed on the National Register of Historic Places, which is protected by federal law, it's also an environmental justice impact, because that's a low-income, it's a minority area. So those are the types of things that we are talking about when we're talking about the area-wide impacts, which I know aren't part of the rezoning, but it's part of, at least my thinking. And this is an opportunity zone, which is a federal designation, so I would think, I don't know how they work, I'm definitely not an expert on opportunity zones, but I'm wondering if the same federal compliance regulations would apply to doing work in an opportunity zone that would apply for doing other federal work? Maybe not. But having said that, it shouldn't take a federal requirement to make you want to do right by the surrounding area. That was just one of my comments. The other comment speaks to the conversations we've been having around community engagement. And I think Mr. Gaylord has mentioned several community engagement meetings, and I guess his program that has been going on for the last couple of years. And I'm certainly not trying to say he hasn't done everything that he has said he has done. But I think what we're hearing now, and the conversations that we're hearing, suggests that maybe we need more community engagement, more, maybe a different type of community engagement. Sometimes the best way to get to know the community is just get out there, walk around, talk to people. You know, Commissioner Lampman mentioned a consultant. Sometimes your people in the community are the best consultants. Hire somebody in the community to join the development team and help you to understand what their needs are and what their desires are and what their vision is. And then you present a plan that really does have community input, because they helped you develop it. I think we might be having a completely different conversation if that type of community engagement happened. But I'm not here to advise on the community engagement. I do have a project-specific question, and it's something that we haven't gotten to in our last two meetings, and we need to, because it's actually the one adverse impact that's identified in the staff report, and that's the transportation infrastructure. And I'd like to hear a little bit about what, what the applicant, well, first of all, I think I want to hear from staff, and then I want to hear from the applicant, because the staff report said that, you know, it's sort of overwhelmed the transportation infrastructure. There are a number of recommendations that were made. However, they mostly tended to be auto-oriented, and as this area is a transit emphasis area, I would think we wouldn't want mitigations that specifically speak to automobile traffic. So how are we going to incorporate the coming BRT and other transit solutions into the mitigation of the transportation impacts in this project? I think that might be for staff and the applicant, because I wanted to make sure I understood that staff, I think the conclusion even said that the TIA wasn't considered complete, because certain questions hadn't been answered yet. I think they talked about incorporating transit, and I think another one was because there was a discussion about traffic being diverted from the area onto the Beltline, but that hadn't really been looked at completely to see how that might affect other areas of Raleigh. So the TIA was considered incomplete right now. And I just wanted to understand more the traffic impact and potential mitigations, and what types of conditions might be offered.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett.
Madam Chair, this is Eric Lamb with the Transportation Department. Would you like me to address that now?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Very good. So Commissioner Bennett did a pretty good job summarizing the staff report, which all of you should have a copy of. The analysis breaks out the three separate tracks and tracks and looks at a variety of mitigation options for each. And the size of the project is, I would say, very substantial. This is the largest traffic study in terms of volume of traffic generation that I've ever seen. And so as part of that, you know, looking at it from the three separate, I'll talk about geography for a minute. While the portion that's associated with the Track C, which allows 9.2 million square feet of office under this plan, and let me address something very briefly about the soccer stadium concept. The soccer stadium is not included as part of this TIA. The TIA and the zoning assumes the development of all of the property in Track C as office space. Introducing a stadium into the mix would conceivably reduce that total yield, but we have to analyze it based on what the office component is. The soccer stadium itself is handled through a separate process. That is a special use permit, and it will have its own traffic impact analysis associated with it. That's one of the requirements as part of a special use permit. And we look more at special event patterns and such, rather than what we normally look at with a TIA for a commercial development like this, which we're looking at specifically AM peak hour and PM peak hour. The other qualifier I'll add to this is that all the analysis that we're doing is based on traditional traffic patterns. We are learning more and more each day about what a post-COVID landscape will look like. There have been some significant changes in how traffic operates relative to peak hours, and so we're learning more about that. Track C is served by the proposed Bus Rapid Transit System, and that will be located in the Wilmington Street corridor. The City Council recently endorsed the Wilmington Street corridor as the locally preferred alternative. And so part of the mitigation on that, part of the implementation for BRT in Wilmington Street specifically, right now, it is a four-lane divided road, and we will be adding the Bus Rapid Transit Lane by taking away two of the travel lanes that are out there. So a couple of the mitigations that the applicant proposed for access to Wilmington Street includes changing things to, you know, multiple turn lanes. That won't be an option for mitigation once the BRT goes into effect. It's our hope, however, that by having the BRT service adjacent to a dense mixed-use development like this, will give it an advantage from a transportation standpoint. So we have less operational concerns about Track C, more concerns about Track A and Track B in principle. And that's specifically because of the limited access that these sites have. Each one of those sites is only served by a single point of access. I think we made this point in our report, that they are functionally cul-de-sacs. And right now, Track A, based on the analysis that we conducted, would support 2.5 million square feet of office, and Track B would support 8.4 million square feet of office. And so that is a fairly significant load in either case on ostensibly a dead-end street system. So that presents some significant obstacles for realistically serving the property and making the traffic function. To address the issue of completeness, one of the things that the team from the applicant's transportation engineer looked at a similar-scale operation, which is obviously North Hills. And one of the things that we support about utilizing dense mixed-use development is that, on the whole, it normally has the ability to operate with less net traffic generation than a peer set of development that's not mixed-use. So the integration of multiple uses into a site, the introduction of density, leads to more of what we call trip capture. And that leads to less total net traffic on a per-square-foot basis that's generated by the development than compared to a standalone shopping center that's just retail, as a comparison, or a standalone office park. So in making observations about how traffic functions at North Hills, the traffic engineering team made a point that they believe that with some of the congestion that's there today around North Hills, that traffic has diverted and made system changes to its traffic patterns. And we think that that's a reasonable assumption. The question is, you know, how much to look at. The applicant provided us with a significant amount of traffic data that shows how much of the traffic that's on South Saunders Street, for example, actually passes through downtown and travels to other points on the system, whether it's up Glenwood Avenue or it's up Capitol Boulevard. And so their hypothesis was that by introducing such a large development here, that it would also similarly constrain traffic in a manner that it would divert trips to other parts of the city. And looked at a scenario that traffic would not be as bad from an impact standpoint if that traffic did divert to other places. And so part of our question that has not been answered yet is, well, what types of impact would that diversion therefore create on other parts of the network? And so, given that, we have not had that feedback yet in terms of what that potential impact might be. I will be happy to answer any of your other questions.
Thank you. If you could hold down the shared screen so I can see, that'd be great. I'm reading the chat. Commissioner Bennett?
So thank you, Eric, for that very thorough reply. So can the applicant then talk about what types of conditions they're offering to mitigate these impacts? And are they submitting an updated TIA to answer staff's question about where the traffic is, what the impact will be of this diverted traffic?
We have not. I can defer to the applicant on that.
Yes, we received the TIA report. And the city's envision tomorrow, as many of you likely know, will use the maximum density across the entire site. And so those 12 million square feet of office that the TIA was using for its calculations, we have conditioned down significantly. The conditions within the case, condition number seven, limits our development to 400,000 square feet of office and 500 residential units. This is on the northern track. And then the southern track, 500,000 square feet of office, 50,000 square feet of retail, 900 residential units. And there's also 25,000 square feet of retail on the northern parcel. So we greatly limited the intensity of the development on the parcels that Eric mentioned he was concerned about, which were A and B. And so we have greatly diminished those intensities. And I can turn it over to Travis Fluid on our team to address the technical aspects of the questions.
All right, can everybody hear me? This is Travis Fluid with Kim Lee Horn. We performed the traffic analysis, and Eric gave a pretty good summary. There are just a couple of things that I wanted to hit on. You know, since we are on the BRT corridor, we are absolutely going to do everything we can to encourage that, incorporate it into the site, make it easy for people on the site to use. Because, you know, the fewer vehicles we have coming to and from the site, the better it's going to be for the development, for the city, for the citizens. We also have good bike and pedestrian connectivity with the Greenway that's running through the site, particularly Track C. And we are definitely looking for ways to incorporate that and really making an amenity to the site, encourage people to use it. We have, as Bonner mentioned, we've capped Tracks A and B to reduce the impacts beyond what was reported in the traffic study. We have not updated that at this point. We have, in coordination with DOT, NCDOT, they have made it clear that additional analyses are going to be required as the development comes online, as the, really when the site plans are submitted. So there are going to be additional studies done for this, and we're going to need to show NCDOT that we can make things work. They are not just going to take our word for it. So as things come online, those additional studies will be done to make sure that all the impacts can be mitigated. You know, I'll hit on the diversion question, you know, as Eric was talking about, what we've seen at North Hills is that if you were to take the North Hills, you know, development and the North Hills East development and run a traffic study for those, and just dump, using the traditional traffic impact analysis methods, or regenerate the traffic and just dump it on the network, the results would be much, much worse than what is actually happening out there today, or at least pre-COVID today. And so the conclusion we draw from that is that people are taking alternate modes, they are staying within the development, what we call internal capture, where people who work in North Hills East are shopping in North Hills, they're going to the restaurants, they may be living there, you know, they're doing all those things to avoid getting out on the network at 5:00 in the afternoon. And then also, the background traffic, the people that are just going up and down six forks are either, you know, finding other ways to get where they're going, they're taking alternate modes, or they're going and making trips in non-peak hours. And so we're really expecting that to occur in this area as well. You know, Eric was mentioning the amount of cut-through traffic we've seen. We did origin destination studies and saw that 40% of the traffic on South Saunders in this area is not going to and from downtown. It's going all the way through, like up as far as the Belt Line, the northern Belt Line. And so, you know, today, that's because South Saunders and Dawson McDowell on Capitol Boulevard through town is the fastest way to get north-south through Raleigh. But we're doing, there are improvements being made. 440 on the western side of town is currently being widened. And so there's additional capacity. And once you add more development, more friction, you know, make this more bikable, walkable, you know, we're adding street trees, all those things that are going to make it just slower for people to get through this section of Raleigh. And those people are going to find other ways. They're going to take BRT, they're going to take 440 around the east side or the west side rather than using South Saunders. And so that is the diversion that we're anticipating. But, and as Eric said, you know, we did not look at the impacts of where that traffic's going to go because it's going to be very dispersed. You know, like I said, it's going to be multiple nodes, multiple routes. We don't know exactly how people are going to get there. But to be conservative, we also ran the analysis without those diversions to see what the impacts would be, assuming that everybody that's on South Saunders today stayed on the road, didn't take BRT, didn't route. So I understand the staff's point that we didn't do that additional analysis, but we also ran it, a diversion, just to see what the impacts would be. So, you know, we're, to sum up, we are definitely looking at alternate routes, making it bikable, walkable. And then there will be much more and more analysis as we go through this process to make sure that we can accommodate and address all the traffic impacts that will be out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
I think part of the problem that we're dealing with as a commission is the lack of policy or ordinance requiring the nature of which how we receive this project, meaning projects of this scale and magnitude, I believe, should be a planned development. And when they are a PD, you are able to answer questions like, what do the buildings look like? What does the massing layout on the site? Where do the green infrastructure improvements go? Details about the traffic impact and details about the stormwater impact? And is there affordable housing can be answered also with projects of a large size in other cities. And we use the example of Denver, there were development agreements associated with this. And we do not have that here. And we have a proposal on the table for a tax increment grant, and the potential of some community benefits agreement, which may be memorialized in an MOU. But because those types of third-party agreements cannot be included in conditions associated with the project, I have to be quite frank, I don't think I can judge this project being in the public interest without including those very specific unreasonable requests that we received from the community. So I don't know that you all are ready to do this at this point, but I will just let you know what direction I am trending, is that I will likely recommend denial of it because we're not able to include those items. If you are interested in hearing a motion, as you all know me well enough now, I have written one out. But I can also, I can also hold that to a time uncertain where you feel like you have enough information.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. Commissioner McIntosh?
Yes, I appreciate Commissioner Fox's comments. But I do think it's important for the public to have more time for input. And I think the public's expecting a time for input next week. And I think, I think that's at a minimum what we should be offering. And when there's time, I also have some transportation questions.
Commissioner McIntosh, did you say you had some transportation questions?
Yeah, I do. Yes, I have, I have questions around, I just wasn't sure if this is a good time for it.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I have questions about equitable development around transit. And I guess we know now the acronym is pronounced EDAT. Is that right? Didn't know that before. So I guess my first question is for staff. And it's, I'm wondering if there are any examples of other places that have created new live-work, a new live-work community right next to the stadium. My understanding is on the BRT corridor, we're expecting for there to be housing, at least, and affordable housing. But is this something that gets done next to stadiums very often?
Um, yeah, it's been done. I mean, Durham, Bull Stadium has, over time, acquired a lot of development around it. A lot of that is commercial and office. You know, one of the things about a stadium is that generates traffic and noise. So if you live right next to it, you got to, if it's game night, there's going to be something going on outside of your apartment. I mean, probably the best, biggest example is the National Stadium. Maybe your area of Washington DC has just seen an enormous boom of development around that stadium. Now, DC has seen an enormous boom of development all over the place. So it's an open question as to whether the stadium was an attractive that was needed to bring development there or not. But there's certainly been a ton of development around the National Stadium. So there are, there are examples of that, for sure.
And Ken, I'll just add that the Knights Stadium in Charlotte is also adjacent to a substantial amount of residential development that's all new.
Commissioner Lampman? Oh, did you have a follow-up, Commissioner McIntosh?
I have more questions, but if Mr. Lampman has something related to the stadium, that's fine.
Thank you.
If it's related to the stadium, yeah. I think that this has been deemed like a general stadium, but can you talk just a bit about the history of the soccer and what this stadium is going to be, just so that we know and we're all clear, that what the purpose of the stadium will be? This is Bonner, for Bonner. Thanks.
Yeah, this will be an entertainment and sports venue that will, the intent is, we all know that Walnut Creek, it causes a we all know that Walnut Creek, it causes a lot of traffic impacts and other impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. But had amphitheaters, a temporary installation was always intended to, to be a temporary installation and is on the site of the convention center expansion, which is contemplated in about seven years. But that's the, the latest that, that has been, it's been forecasted. And so downtown won't have a music venue. The, the venues that we, we have other venues such as PNC Arena, which are wonderful. However, they don't bring economic impact to the surrounding neighborhood because not being in a, in a walkable vertically integrated transit connected mixed use community like downtown south, there isn't anything to, to any reason for people to stay. And so they, they don't come early and have dinner and have a drink. They don't stay late and have ice cream after the game. There's no retention there and that's a traffic impact, obviously. And, and the, the goal with the entertainment and sports venue is, is also to bring Major League Soccer to the, the triangle and to Raleigh specifically, to downtown Raleigh. And those franchises trade and are the potential to get those remains. The while Charlotte did receive an MLS franchise, David Tepper, the league has remained vocal that they feel Raleigh would be a wonderful market for MLS. They love regional rivalries. And so that, that is still our, our path.
So we would need to create a team for the stadium then, is that right?
No, there's new teams that, that are being created. I'm not sure of the, the timeline for MLS and when the next teams are created. And then also there's about thirty teams out there already, some of which performing better than others. And so teams are bought and sold all the time.
So we would recruit then, is that right?
Either recruit or a new franchise, yes.
I'd like to take it back to Commissioner McIntosh. Thank you.
Right, thank you. So I'm, I'm actually more interested in the equitable development around transit. And I guess this is for Mr. Gaylord. So I'm, I've read that there's a new EDAT guidebook that's in the process of being adopted. That includes recommendations for equitable development around transit, including building heights being mostly seven stories, but in some cases going up to twelve or twenty stories. Generally forty-story buildings are not recommended for equitable development around transit. I'm guessing because of the cost. But so my question for you is, I know you're, the affordable housing was in the red list, which was the majority of the list in your goals that you're not actually including in conditions. But would you consider adding to your conditions that you would incorporate equitable development around transit? It seems like this is a major north, south, south corridor for the city, for the BRT. It seems strange if the city is trying to have equitable development all along the BRT line, it seems strange that this stop would not include that. Is that something you all could include?
Include the handbook?
Include development in line with the handbook, so following the recommendations of the handbook. To include affordable housing in this development.
Yeah, we, we have included a number of the components of the handbook already as part of the case. And we would need to look through the, the current draft and to discern where there might be additional areas to, to explore that would be applicable to this development and, and in line with the handbook. So we, we can.
So are you saying that your list before, when you said affordable housing was not going to be included as a condition? Are you saying you are including that as a condition or you're, you're going to?
No, no, what I'm saying is that the, the equitable development around transit, one of its components is an equity fund. The equity fund would generate the funds for the affordable housing. The other components of the equitable development around transit handbook and the recommendations contained there within are something we can explore.
Okay.
You have a follow-up question, Commissioner McIntosh?
Yeah, I, I have a few. So I'm wondering, you know, as a part of this project, will you ask the council to adopt the equitable development around transit? Skip that, I'm not sure how to ask that. I'm sorry. This is. It feels like there's general statements being put out that are not enforceable. And I think for the public to have trust in this project, we need to see conditions that are written. It's just, there's a lot of marketing without an actual plan in front of us to back up what we're being told. We, we review, I'm sorry. We review cases that are, you know, less than a hundredth of the size of this case, where we get site plans that are detailed down to very different levels for different areas of town. But in wealthy white areas of town, we sometimes hear about the screening. It's going to be included for dumpsters to make sure that neighbors are not negatively impacted. And on this case, we're not really being given any information on how the surrounding community is going to be protected or benefit. And we have, I, I'm sorry, I have to make a correction. It was stated earlier that we'd received about three hundred emails from concerned residents. But by my count, we received three hundred sixty-nine. And of those, there was only one in favor of the application. The rest, three hundred sixty-eight generally supported the proposals by partners for environmental justice. And we're very interested in the community benefits agreement. And I just don't know how we can have any trust around this without written conditions that support the needs of the community.
Thank you, Commissioner McIntosh. I think Commissioner Winters.
Just a quick follow-up to Commissioner McIntosh. Just wanted to say that I saw two in favor of the project. And it was so startling, as you said, the three sixty-eight and sixty-nine. I wrote down their names. They're Brindy Vega and Nate Humphrey. Those are the only two that were in support of the project. Otherwise, it was a question of, as you were saying, but that the community is asking why the rush and how these conditions meant. And also seemed to be a genuine lack of trust with what is being proposed and how it's being proposed with the lack of specificity and concrete verbiage. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. I just, I have asked a few questions during the course of these meetings, but largely been listening. And I have to say, I know that this is a tense project and a very large and impactful project for the city. And distrust is a concern and trying to rebuild that. But I'll say overall, it's actually been quite a bit of a pleasure to sit in and enjoy the robust policy debates going on as opposed to just sort of being for and against. You know, the nation is at quite a bit of a fever pitch right now with everything happening at the election, with the election season and with how divisive and really scary sometimes the country and the world is right now. I feel like as a community, we're really sticking to a lot of the policy debates here. And as opposed to some of the more critical attacks. And especially with the idea that we might need to vote on this sort of right around Election Day. It sort of makes sense that there's even more of a fever pitch going on. Going on or just that these, all these meetings are occurring around Election Day. And so, I mean, I just wanted to thank the members of the public who have really, their comments, you know, with all of those emails were really focused largely on a lot of the concerns that they wanted to see addressed as opposed to some of the other things that, that sometimes we might see it when this goes on in other cities. So thanks to everyone that sent those in and also thanks to my fellow commissioners. I have that most respect for the, my fellow commissioners and all of them, in particular the, the women on this meeting. Sorry about that, dealing with things in the background right now. And anyway, I wanted to say that to Commissioner Fox's point, I am also largely, and, and to many of the points on this call, I am concerned a lot about the fact that we can't see the terms of sort of the fundamental agreement that is in part and parcel to this project. I'm sorry about this. It's part and parcel to this project. And in terms of the TIG grant or the community benefits agreement, and it's not within our purview. And not only can we not see the terms of that, the city of Raleigh has never seen a project like this. We've never had TIG or TIF financing. And to my knowledge, I don't think we've had a community benefits agreement in the past either. So we don't even have a precedent that we could look on, that we could look to, to see what the terms of this might be and how that has worked in the past. And, you know, we could hypothetically try and figure out some kind of approval that is conditional based on a long list of recommendations on what that TIG equity grant might look like and also the community benefits and infrastructure that might be provided. And in a sense, try and sort of create a planned development that, in that way. But that's really not within our purview. And we, so, and it would be too challenging. And, you know, that, that's really going to be the role of council here. So I'm in supportive of Commissioner Fox's proposal. And, and in addition, continuing to hold these meetings so that we can continue to get the public input and inform the conditions that would eventually appear on a rezoning request and in a TIG and community benefits agreement with the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Lampman.
I apologize earlier for changing the tone. I, that was uncalled for. I apologize. Though one question I had was, I thought that we have some time to evaluate this. I didn't think we had to vote on it next week. I thought it was something like early January.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
The, the planning commissioner's deadline for action is January eleventh, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Commissioner McIntosh, I apologize. Thank you.
Commissioner Winters, did you have a?
Yeah, Commissioner Lampman addressed it for me because that November, voting around November, Election Day kind of triggered me. And I'm like, no, we have until January eleventh. So I just didn't know if it was new information that was catching us by surprise again. So thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a note that it is a little past quarter of seven. And our meeting is scheduled to adjourn at, at seven o'clock. So just to be aware of the time. Are there any additional questions or comments for staff or for the applicant?
Tika, are you going to do your usual where you summarize everything that is being requested?
Well, no, not exactly. No staff can help me with that. I mean, I think we've heard a lot of comments about, number one, that we would, we need to receive the stormwater analysis in order to be able to review it and ask questions and have discussion on that. We've heard a lot of discussion about community engagement and all the various forms and impacts that has on housing, transportation, culture. And let's see, what else have we heard about? We've heard concern about the lack of specificity and the conditions for a project of this size and scale. And I think we've heard some very specific requests for what we would like to see in that regard. I'm not going to go through all of those items unless folks feel the need. And let's see, what have I missed? Commissioner McIntosh, I see you had your hand up.
Oh, I was getting this one of those specific requests for conditions from the Audubon Society.
Yes, I think we've had some specific conditions around public art, around protecting the environment, around protecting specifically birds and wildlife and habitat, preserving the landscape. And then obviously we've had a lot of requests about addressing how equitable development can happen in the context of this very large project and also in the context of being near the BRT. So that's a very general overview, I think, of what we covered. I think we're planning on discussing the stormwater report. I did want to add a note, sort of in support of Commissioner Fox's statements. This does feel like what we're asking for is really a PD and not a rezoning. And there's a few reasons that I think have been covered in that. But one of them is the comp plan inconsistency for transportation. I have concerns about that, specifically the development. If the development that's permitted potentially changes significantly based on a traffic analysis, it seems like it would be prudent to have a better understanding of those impacts and, and also what the potential mitigations need to be. Additionally, the request is, could be more compatible with adjacent properties. If it was located for those that are, the properties located alongside Granite Street, by reducing the requested building heights and changing the proposed zoning of commercial mixed use to a lower intensity district. Or as we've stated over and over, that could be done through some conditioning. Additionally, the future land, future land use map consistency, where office and research and development is mapped, reducing height there to bring that more inconsistent, a more consistent with the future land use map. Are there any other summary notes or comments that would be, or specifics that would be useful for the applicant before we adjourn? Commissioner Bennett.
I don't think this is necessarily a summary note, but something to think about for our next meeting. Because since our, the staff presentation included the slides on equitable development around transit, which I really appreciated, and we're not going to discuss that until our November nineteenth meeting. It would be nice and maybe a bit reassuring if we could frame our discussion for the next meeting around that. Let's talk about what types of conditions or what the applicant might be looking at doing, particularly since they will have met with One Wake, I think twice at that point, he said. So maybe there is some discussion that can be had around the presentation we had today on the equitable development around transit. Because since it was introduced to us, I, I figure it was important. And it is unfortunate that we're not getting to discuss it in detail, detail until the nineteenth. So if we could have some conversation, in addition to the stormwater analysis, about what conditions we might be able to include to give the community some reassurance that, you know, the applicant really is looking towards equitable development within this project. I mean, maybe that might make everybody feel a little better. And it's obviously an important issue, you know, it's not just to make us feel better. It's, 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 it's an important issue. And it would be nice to be able to have a conversation framed around that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ben. I think that's very helpful and useful as we look to the next meeting, you know, to, to have that framework in mind. I appreciate those comments. Commissioner Lampman.
Do, now we're, we're having a lot of meetings and we're scheduling them, but it sounds to me like. But it sounds to me like we have time. Do we need to meet next week? You know, I know stormwater needs to digest all the information. I think Ben would appreciate the extra time. I would definitely like to see the equitable development around transit agreement, whatever that takes form as, to have that discussion as well. I'd like to be more prepared for the depth of conversation that Commissioner Bennett is talking about. I don't think we need to meet next week, personally.
Thank you, Commissioner Lampman. Commissioner Winters?
Thank you. To that, and the Commissioner Lampman said, with the extra meetings, I do appreciate the extra meetings, but again, with everything else in the sense of rush, maybe we should consider requesting an extension beyond January 11th since it's so, we're talking about pieces with transit. We're talking about pieces with the stormwater that seem to maybe be resolved. There still seems to be a lot at hand. And I do not know, in light of the holidays coming, if January 11th is even reasonable to, if we continue to meet, I understand. But at that breakneck, breakneck pace, I'm wondering how digestible the information is. And the turnarounds are so quick. So in addition to considering how we can absorb this and digest it more easily, we should consider requesting an extension from city council. All due respect to the timeline of the applicant, I do understand. But also, as we're talking about, this is really a PD in a rezoning costume and trying to do as good of a job as we can. And 90 days, though that is, I understand customary, that's our normal timeline. It is not enough time, especially when you're looking at the end of the year with holidays and all that that encounters. So I would encourage us to consider that going forward. I know that's not necessarily a motion we can make or a decision we can make here. There's more so one, is that one for full planning? Or is that something we can do here going forward? Is that just, let me just say this, is there something we can do now so we can at least have the request in for the next time council meet?
Thank you, Commissioner Winters and Commissioner Lampman. I, my recommendation, my feeling is that keeping the meeting for next week would be useful. It would give us a chance, can you hear me? Okay. It would give us a chance to review stormwater and at least, that's a, there's a lot there. And so I think at least beginning the process of understanding that would be useful. And also then, if, you know, there's a discussion on timing that we want to have thoughtfully, we could, you know, entertain that at that time as well. Commissioner Bennett.
But I think I heard Ben, and he's still on, so he can answer. I think I heard him say, he can't get to us what we're asking for ahead of the meeting. He said he could only get his comments back to the applicant to us, but we wouldn't be able to see any revisions the applicant had made prior to our meeting. So I'm not sure the Thursday meeting is going to allow us to get what we want.
Let's see.
This is Ken Bowers. Another issue has been raised, which is the availability of stormwater staff on the afternoon of Thursday because it conflicts with a meeting of the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission, which they normally staff, it being the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission.
Okay, but that seems like it would be critical to have them there at the meeting on Thursday since I think that's what we're, that's what we'd like to focus on as well as, you know, talking about conditions around equitable development around transit. So can staff offer some guidance on how we should proceed about Thursday?
Just going to add, can I ask? Can you guys hear me right now?
Yes.
Okay. Were we also going to get to see a copy of the MOU? Are there other items that we could talk about next Thursday? I'm concerned that we have the one committee of the whole meeting right now scheduled in November. And I don't know if other items are also going to appear on that agenda. So if we have some, if we have the MOU or some other items we could address next Thursday, that might be helpful to, at least, it sounds like there's a lot to go over. And if, you know, if council does not give us an extension, we might be running up against an opportunity for additional engagement and discussion on this item, on some of the items.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. And I've received a message from, I think, the, from the applicant, if we would want to consider moving the meeting from Thursday to Friday of next week. So I guess that's a possibility. Is the best way to handle this is? I'm not really sure. I guess the question is to staff, what's the best way to handle this? I think we could vote by a raise of hands, who would like to meet on Thursday. Since stormwater can't be there Thursday, then we could also, you know, see if Friday would work. And I suppose staff would have to do a little bit of work to see if that works for them. And I guess I would ask that they advise us via email or whatever they think is best. Does staff have any thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, you're asking if we can schedule the meeting, or look at Friday as potential meeting date and then if it's possible, announce that we would have to just have 48 hours to do that. So we would have to be able to announce it by Wednesday.
Okay. So I think there's a potential, if we don't meet Thursday and choose to see if Friday works, that we don't meet at all, right? There's that potential. Since I don't know the answers to whether we can meet on Friday or not. So with that in mind, would commissioners still like to retain the meeting for next Thursday? With a show of hands, if you are in favor of retaining Thursday's meeting, raise your hand.
I have a point of clarification.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, Commissioner Winters.
Yes. My question is, what would the agenda be to meet on Thursday? I'm not clear as to what that would be, which we determine.
I guess we would be talking about conditions, specific conditions for equitable development around transit. Commissioner Fox. Can't hear you. I think you're still muted.
Sorry about that. I think the bigger question is, how many reports need to tell you which way to vote? Because I feel like these reports will give us good information, but will not address things like affordable housing, workforce development, local hiring, living wage structure, input on project design or community oriented services and amenities, which have been very clear. One reason why we keep the projects at the table and keep it open is because we anticipate getting comment that is different or elaborates on some of the components. But what we've seen is a very effective campaign of information, which requests for very specific things. And we're being told that two of them cannot be components of this project. Just a thought.
Thank you. So I guess I would like some guidance on whether or not commissioners want to meet this next Thursday as we had previously planned. If you do not want to meet next Thursday, that if you feel that that it wouldn't be fruitful, I guess I would ask you, raise your hand.
One more, one more clarification. The stormwater staff conflict is from three to five. So they could potentially be available later in the meeting, not just not at this beginning.
This is on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. What's, what's the will of the commission? So I guess stormwater could join us in the latter half of our meeting, is what you're saying. And if we were to meet on Thursday?
Yes, as I understand it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
We're getting, 5:15 is when they think they could join the meeting.
Okay. I mean, that, that seems reasonable breakdown to me. I, if I, I saw, I think, one hand raised opposed to meeting on Thursday, no hands raised in favor of meeting on Friday. So unless I have a specific direction from commission and what they want, I'm going to suggest we keep Thursday's meeting. Commissioner Bennett?
My question is, and maybe Ken, you can answer this. They can be available on Thursday. But are they going to be able to give us what we're asking for before Thursday? I'm trying not to create an unreasonable burden for staff.
There are doubts as to whether they would be able to provide you with everything you need on Thursday.
So then are we going to have a productive meeting on Thursday? Because let's say we're going to talk about equitable development around transit. Is the applicant going to have something developed for us to talk about meaningfully by Thursday?
Absolutely. We'll get to work and we haven't done an assessment, but we can put the team to work and have something meaningful to talk through on Thursday.
Thank you.
So, and, and if we don't have enough information on Thursday to, you know, truly discuss the stormwater, we can just adjourn the meeting when we're ready to adjourn with, you know, feasibly after we speak on E-DAT. So with that in mind, does that make sense? Unless I hear something specific, otherwise specific, different than keeping our meeting on Thursday, I'm going to recommend we keep it and meet Thursday as we had planned. I'm seeing some heads shaking.
I'm sorry, you said Thursday at what time? I'm sorry.
I believe it's at 3:00 PM on Thursday. Let me double check. Yep. From three to six on Thursday, November 5th. All right. So with that, thank you all for working through that. That concludes today's committee of the whole meeting. I do want to thank everybody for staying a little late, for the robust discussion and for staff, your efforts for the applicant and for the public for their participation. And we are adjourned. Thank you.